Efforts have been made to tackle the matters of women's representation in the highest elected positions. In India, the topic of reservation for women in the Lok Sabha and the legislative assemblies have been under discussion for more than three decades, with numerous attempts by different governments to introduce such a bill. And in this, various leaders from across party lines have played a pivotal role in making this happen. And I would like to name leaders like Madam Swishma Swaraj, Madam Mrs Sonia Gandhi, Madam Bindra Karath. And across party lines, these women and many other leaders have played a pivotal role in bringing about this kind of a change. And today, sir, today the most recent version of this bill referred to as the Constitution 128th Amendment Bill of 2023, which was presented to us yesterday at the special session of the Lok Sabha. The entire credit for that goes to our honourable Prime Minister, Prime Minister Modi ji and the current government. So why is it important that we have women's representation? As per the latest figures published by the Interparliamentary Union and the United Nations as of 2023, India ranks 140 out of 186 countries when it comes to women's representation in parliament. India has 15.1% representation in the lower house and only about 13.8 in the upper house. While representation in both the houses has increased, these figures still remain very low. Sir, my own state, as Madam Sumalata was talking about the matrilineal society, I also belong to a state which has a matrilineal society. And even in my own constituency, in my own state, we have only three women as legislative members. From the northeast, there are only four women who are members of parliament today.
Thank you.
Sir, please, just give me two minutes, sir. So also, India ranks 127 out of 146 countries in the Global Gender Index, GAP Index by the World Economic Forum. The index evaluates women's participation in four spheres: economic participation and opportunity, educational attainment, health and survival, and political empowerment. In terms of crimes against women, we have seen, according to the National Crime Record Bureau, in 2012, 2.44 lakh crimes against women was reported. This number jumped to about 4.28 lakhs in 2021, implying a 42.96% increase in the total crimes reported. Sir, today I am so grateful and I am so honoured to be, you know, presenting my speech in the new parliament house which represents modern India. But at the same time, sir, it is also a fact that 23 million girls drop out of school because of nonavailability of menstrual hygiene in these schools.
Okay.
Sir, after the 73rd and the 74th amendment, we have seen that in the Panjat, more women representation has increased. And we see that our studies tells us that a lot of, you know, facilities like in terms of water, in terms of health and schools have improved because of policies made at that level. Therefore, there is a need for women's representation because policy is sensitive to women and the girl child is drastically improved when women are there in policymaking.
I agree.
Sir, just give me two points. I won't go into the details. I just want to make two points here. First is, sir, though I agree and as a party we agree with this amendment bill, Sir, Article 332A, Clause 2, it states as nearly as maybe one-third of the total number of seats shall be reserved. This should be changed, sir, to the language saying not less than one-third of the total number of seats shall be reserved because this would make it, you know, there will be no scope for, you know, a maybe in this. Secondly, sir, this scheme, sorry, this act does not talk about reservation in the Rajya Sabha. So even that would be considered.
Srimad Yabharajda Sarin.
Sir, can I please conclude with one quote from a poem by Maya Angelou, from a poem called The Grandmothers, and I quote, "I come as one, but I stand as 10,000." Today, I unquote, "Sir, today I stand on behalf of almost 50% of the population of this country, which is women, my mothers, my sisters, and I would like to thank the government for giving us this wonderful bill and we support it and I would like to congratulate everybody here today. Thank you. Jai Hind."
Sarin.
Dhanyavad Adhyaksh Mahode. Ya mera sobahge hai, mere liye suyog hai, ki main nari shakti bandhan adhiniyam 2023 ke samartan me bolene ke liye khadi hu. Sir, Hindi ki ek kavita hai, do pankiyon se apni baat ki shurwad karna chahungi. Tumme ek analkan ho keval, anukul hawa lekin paakar, chappar tak to tum ja sakti, jualaa prachand faila sakti, ek nandhi si chingarhi bhi. Saradarniye Pradhankmantri Sri Narendran Modi ji, desh me mahilaon ke liye anukul hawa aur sakaratmak par vatawaran ke sristi karne ke dishaan me padakshap le raha hai. Bahut hi balishth padakshap unke balishth netrutta me aur hum sab ka kartavve banta hai. Hum sab jitne log bate hai, jis dal ke jo bhi hai, hum sab ka kartavve hai, ki hum is ase balish padakshap lena wale vakti ke saath khade ho aur unke prati apna aabhar vakti kare. Main ek mahila sanshad hu, main bhuvanishvar ka pratinidhitva is Lok Sabha me karti hu. Aur yah jo suyog hai, yah jo sobahge hai, mere Pradhankmantri ji ne mujhe diya hai. Main unke prati apna aabhar vakti karti hu aur is bill ke liye bhi unhe me bahut bahut dhanyavad dekhi hu. Adhyaksh Mahode, kal purane sansab bhavan me jab main pravesh kar rahi thi, to adarniya Sonia Gandhi ji bhi pravesh kar rahi thi, main peechh hatt ke khadi ho gayi. Jitne bhi media bandhu the, shambadic bandhu the, unhone unse pucha, ki adarniye Pradhankmantri Modi ji bill la raha hai, mahila sanraksan bill aapka kya kahna hai? Unhone kaha, ya humara bill hai. Sar me hatprab rahe gayi, main aaschari chakit rahe gayi. Aur nischit toar par main bole na chahungi, do baate rekna chahungi, maine dekha hai. Sir, I will take you down the memory lane. Please listen to me. You have spoken enough. Let a woman speak. Sir, I would like to take you down the memory lane. 12th September 1996, at the cost of being repetitive, I would like to say all these things. Mr Nishikanth Dubeji has said and all my colleagues have said, but at the cost of being repetitive, I would say, Mr Devgora ji in the 11th Lok Sabha had actually brought this bill. I repeat, 12th September 1996, then 12th Lok Sabha, 13th Lok Sabha in 1998 and 1999. Sir, every government, every time tried to push this bill, but nobody succeeded. And I tell you, it demands a lot of courage and some degree of conviction to bring the bill again and say that we will pass it. It doesn't come like that. Sir, main aapko kahna chahungi, ki March 9, 2010, Rajya Sabha me maanti hu, Congress ne isse laya tha. Maanti hu ki do tihai bahumat se pass isse kia gaya. Lekin, main batana chahungi, kal se main TV ke debates me bati hu, main batana chahungi humare sare bandhoo ko ki us samay Bharatiya Janata Party ne is bill ka bharpur samartan kia tha, kyokhi mahilaon ke saath lagatar Bharatiya Janata Party khadi re hai aur khadi rehgi. 50% lok sankhya hamari mahila hai aur unke prati humare man me bade yaad aur samman ka bhaav hai. Sir, 27 varsoo ki yatra ke baad ke paschat, aaj Pradhankmantri Mahode ne is bill ko hum sab ke samakshu par sthaapit kia aur nischit toar par kahungi ki yah bill bahut hi
Samapth kiji.
Acha bill hai, sab log, hum log iski prasancha kare, iske saath khade ho aur sir ek baat me batana chahungi nischit toar par.
Dhanyavad.
Sir, mujhe aap do minute ka samay to zarur denge.
Ek minute.
No, sir, please give me two minutes time. I would definitely like to mention here that implementation is a very strong point of Prime Minister Modi's government. Whether it is Article 370 or Triple Talak or GST, One Nation, One Tax, whatever big works, big achievements that have come our way, we have handled all the issues with lot of deftness. So sir, right now, the issue is of implementation and I tell you once again, implementation is our strong point.
Thank you.
Censor will be carried out, delimitation exercise will be done. But this particular bill may kindly be passed by all of us and the implementation will be carried out under the leadership of our Prime Minister.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Abhijit.
And it is our responsibility to vote the bill.
Thank you.
Aaj mujhe samvidhan mein ekspertizma sansodhan Vidheyak 2023 mahila action bill par vichar rakne ka moka diya, main aapka, tatha bahujon samaj party ki rasta adhaksa adharni behenji ka abhad pirkar karna chahta hu. Mahode, Baba sahab, Dr Bhimram Bedkar ji ki kitni bhi, durghami soch thi ki samvidhan sabha me mahilaon aur puruson ke bijch link ke anupat me athaar, desh ki aadi aabadhi, ke samuchit jaise section arthik aur rajatik vikash ke liye samvidhan me vyvasta di, aur Baba sahab ne kaha hai ki samme Bharatiya samaj me, yaad ki kisi samaj ke samadr vikash ko dekna hai, to us samaj ke mahilaon ko hi dasa aishit dekha jana ja sakta hai. Mahilaon ko shikshet karna, sarkari naukriya, uchit prasinit, tada rajati me bhi, uchit prasinit dekhar desh ki aadi aabadhi ki vikash ke bare me kya tha? Jaise ki hum sabhi ko jante hai, is sansodhan ka udesh mahilaon ke sankhya Lok Sabha, Rajya Sabha, Lok Sabha, Rajyaon ke vidhan sabhaon me, tatha raste rajdhani, khet Delhi ke vidhan sabhaon me mahilaon ke sankhya badhane ka hai. Berthamaan me sankhya la vo chooda pratisat apne desh me hai, jo ki ane desh ki tolna me bahut kam hai. Manush Suprem Court ne, B Indra Sahani, Vrsayji Union Government of India ke case me, mahilaon ke action ke samband me, sarkari naukriya, politika resolution me, 30% action dele ki vyvasta di thi. Isse pur bhi mahila action dele ke liye samvidhan me ke sansodhan, Article 249A, 330A, 332A me bhi sansodhan karne ke liye, bas 1996, 1998, 1999 aur 2008 me, tatkali sarkar dwara priyas kya gaya. Leki sarkaro ki mansa, mahilaon ke adhikaar ke prati sachak na hone aur durghera se gresht hone ke karan, aaj tak ya bill ante mukam tan hi pahunch sakha hai. So, so kuch sankhae hai, jaise ki ya bill pass hota hai, to is bill me yeh pradhana kya jaye, kya gaya hai? Sabse pehle janghana, baad me prashiman, uske baad is bill ko lagu karna hai. Mera kahna hai ki vars 2000, Yalakhi janna ke baad janghana hui, 2021 ke janghana bhi na hi hui hai. Aaj tak iski ane karwahi, sapavitne ki jase ki hai. Yani ki janghana, sir.
Yes.
Sat ek minute, sir. Main keval 5 se 10 bar ka samay lagega, us janghana ke baad prashiman ne jo samay lagega, bolak hai. Mujhe laga hai ki berthamaan sarkar me bhi, do pisri sarkaro ke tar hai, ya bill, ek vote, holi vali janata ke mahilaon ke vote ka dhurvi kand ka priyas na ho. Humari party ke door se, adarni behenji ki mang hai, yaad ki ya bill pass hota hai, to pehle se chale a rahe, anusha jati, anusha jati ka jo kota hai, usko dekho, berthamaan me jo kota hai, vo berthamaan me usi siti me reh, aur jo 33% ka action, to anusha jati, anusha jati, aur sab samaj ke mahilaon ke liye jo aap log la raha hai, usme STST aur OBC ka action bhi alakse nityat karne ke liye ho ta, is sarkar ko karne chahiye.
Samapth kiji.
Sir, ek minute, main aapke madhav se kahna chahta hu ki sarkare, tamam sarkaro ne apni bhi baat rakne ka kam kaya, main bhi do minute main bhi baat rakhoonga. Adarni behen kumarii majdi se sarkar, 2007 me jo uttar pradesh me behenji mukhamatri thi, behen kumarii majdi ne mahilaon ke thal ke liye, balka ke thal ke liye, sapatri bhai full arthik madad yoja la kar, is pradesh, uttar pradesh me, jo kaksha 10 ki baail ka pass karke kaksha 11 me jaegi, usse 15,000 rupees cycle dele ki vyvasta ki, aur kaksha 11 ke pass karke, vo bachya ke bare me jati thi, jo 10,000 rupees ki vyvasta dele ka kam kya. Manvar, humari sarkar me, adarni behen kumarii majdi ne, maamaya havas yoja dekhar, mahilaon ko ek ghar dele ka vyvasta di, maamaya pension yoja la kar, mahilaon ko pension dele ka kam kya. Aur itne rahi, humare sarkar ke reto uttar pradesh me, Kasurba Gandhi Vidyal hai, khole gaye jaha par, Dalit pisre kamjor, jo bachya shiksha karan ke karshati thi, un bachya ke shiksha karan ke liye vyvasta, saath me hostel dekhar, unhe shiksha dele ka kam kya. Aaj me main, humari party, is bill ka samartan kar diya, aapka bhago dhanyavad.
Next, the report of the Business Advisory Committee, Honourable Minister Sri Prahala Joshi ji. Prahala Joshi ji.
Sir, with your permission, I rise to present the 45th Report of the Business Advisory Committee.
Thank you. All the members are requested to conclude their speech within two, three minutes. There is a direction from the Honourable Speaker. So please abide by the direction of the chair. Next speaker is Sri P Ravindranath Kumar.
Sir, thank you, Speaker, sir. Sir, in Tamil Nadu before 1990, if a baby girl was born, she was killed by his own parents or relatives by giving poison from the plant, cactus plant. In Tamil, we named it Kalipal. Because of the poor parents, because of the poverty, they can't grow the baby girl in the society. Our Tamil Nadu former Chief Minister of Tamil Nadu, Dr Jayal Elidha, who we all fondly call Prachit Talavi Amma. Amma had fought her way to the top of the largely male political public sphere, primarily on her own strength. She improved their lives in a big way. Their scheme, named Credit Baby Scheme, was among the first ever welfare schemes launched by the Amma to save these baby girls to check female, fittest side and gender-based abosans. And also, the first all-woman police station in entire Asia during her first tenure as Chief Minister in early 1990s. And also favorable schemes like Amma Master Health Checkup Plan for Women, Amma Baby Care Kit Scheme, Taliki Tangam Tiktham, which means gold for marriage whereby 4 grams of gold and cash up to 50,000 was offered to economically backward women who had completed their diploma degree. The welfare schemes for school-going girls remain as role model to the rest of the states. All women's administered hotels called Amma Unavagam, which along with feeding thousands of poor, has also improved the life of many women.
Now come to the bill.
I will complete it in two minutes.
Now come, now come to the bill, bill.
Yes, sir. Sir, Tamil Nadu is the among the first states that provide 50% reservation for women in local bodies and under late Amma Prachit Talavi Amma. Two consecutive terms for women were announced in the constituencies reserved for them. I wish to suggest that this will be continued in the new reservation policy too. And also, I wish to urge that women from the OBC community should also be considered for reservation in the Lok Sabha and the legislative assemblies.
Yes.
And finally, I wish to appreciate the vision and efforts of Honourable Prime Minister Sri Narendran Modi ji for truly extracting the, sir, I, one minute I've read, sir. Sri Narendran Modi ji for truly extracted the potential of Narisakti in building a powerful and prosperous Artman Nirma Bharat. I came across many of my colleagues in the opposition criticizing our Prime Minister for bringing this bill for political gains. Let me like to remind them that it was our Prime Minister who since taking office in 2014 has consistently emphasized the importance of gender equality and the need to empower women in all spheres in life. Let us,
Thank you.
Let us not, let us not forget that we have for the first time a representation, a woman representation from the tribal community to the highest constitutional position of the president of our country. This is the highest example of an inclusive democracy as envisaged by our Honourable Prime Minister Sri Narendran Modi ji. So, on behalf of our Prachit Talavi Amma and our party coordinator, Thiruopaniselvam and my beloved mother Sri Vijayal Hvi, I support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sri Thomas Charikadan.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to participate in the discussion on the Constitution 128th Amendment Bill 2023, which will provide one-third reservation to women in parliament as well as the state assemblies. Sir, I on behalf of my party Kerala Congress CM, support this bill to provide the reservation to the women in parliament and state assemblies. See, this house must be aware about the fact that this is not the first attempt to give the reservation to empower the women politically. Many attempts have been made so far, that has already been mentioned here. Even asked, early asked in 1931, prominent leaders like Saravajini Nayadu, Bigam Shah Navas, wrote to the then-British Prime Minister, asking him to take steps for ensuring absolute equality of political status for Indian women. The National Perspective Plan of 1988 for women also made recommendations to give reservations to women at all levels of governance from Panjat to parliament. By way of 73rd and 74th Constitutional Amendment Act, one-third of the seats of the women were reserved for the Panjath Raj institutions at both urban as well as local bodies. Sir, Rajugandi, we must remember Rajugandi for his efforts in 1989 to bring a bill for the reservation of women. Subsequently, it has already been mentioned, the HD Devagada Ministry, then again in 1998, 1999, 2000, 2002 and 2003, such an attempt was made. But now, it is of course, it is credibility of the government that they are coming up with the reservation bill now.
Thank you.
It is important to mention here the fact that the current representation of women in the parliament is only around 15%. The bill to enable greater participation of women in women as public representatives in policymaking is, at the state and national level is very good. Sir, however, things are not as simple as told by the present government. First, the bill in clause 5 says that the reservation can only be implemented after the exercise of delimitation is undertaken for this purpose after the relevant case for the first census taken after the commencement of this act. Sir, the government for the first time after independence has not conducted the census in time. That is, within 10 years. See, if the government was intending to do or come up with this amendment, they should have conducted the census long back. And if the intention of the government is not clear, sir, hence I will. Second, there is no provision for reservation of OBC and that has to be done.
Okay.
Sir, one more, one more point I would like to express here. Kerala is a pioneer in the women empowerment. Sir, after the 73rd and 74th Amendment, Constitutional Amendment, we have passed the Kerala municipal, Kerala Panjath Raj Act and
Yes, Thomas.
Kerala municipal act and we have reserved 33%. Then it has been increased, already mentioned here, it has been increased to 50%.
Next.
Now it is more than 58% in Kerala, the women are, moreover,
Sri Indrahan Subhan.
Sir, only one minute, only one minute.
Last sentence.
Sir, we in Kerala, we have achieved in many aspects. See, in the literacy of women, we are first. In the case of health parameters,
Thank you, Sri Indrahan Subhan.
So, we are the role model.
Mananaya Sabapati ji.
Thank you.
Aaja yes, aithiachek shanma, yes, naya sadhan ko naya bhavan ma, pahilo choti, yes, vidheyak ma, jaha nari shakti karun ko visai lai niyera, 33% seat Lok Sabha ma ani state legislative assemblies haruma reservation garne visai ma aaja yaha bole na pahunda. Malai khushi lai kusa, ra, sikim kranti kari moorcha party ko taraf baata ani sampuna sikim e jan samudai ko taraf baata, yo vidheyak lai, antarik hridai baata nai samartan janauna chaan saho. Ra, jaba, yo khushi ko pani kura ho ki yo vidheyak aaja yaha parit garinde sah bane, feri yesma sochnu panni visai pani sah. Jaba 75 varsa aaja Bharat swatant bhai ko 75 varsa baad ma matra yo vidheyak lai yaha parit garna lehi deisa. Ra, dhairai baata sunio, yo dhairai potta koshis gario. Tar Bharat ma, aamile aaja buzdai saho ki yesto prejudice sah, aamile yesto nari shakti karun ko visai lai pani, aamile samay ma parit garna sakhe na, ra 33% reservation jund di nu panni thiyo, tiyo di na sakhi na. Tar aaja malai laxa, Dr BR Ambedkar, ju ko jund sapanath thiyo, jund vision thiyo, aaja gara yo purna rukma pura hunesa. Ra, yesko nimti, mananaya Pradhankmantri Ju ani waako government lai antarik hridai baata ani sikim e jan samudai ko taraf baata, main dhanyavad di na chaan su. Yo bill, yo karan le pani important sah ki jaba aamii amrit kal ma, aaja yo amrit kal ma saho, ra 2047 sal samma ma, aamii yora vikasit desh banne, yora vichar leira agi bordaisa, bane deki, yes samay ma, hamro nari shakti karun ekdame jaruri hunsa. Ra, jati pani, hamro nari, hamro mahila gannuunsa, vaar ko bhagidarri, keval administration ma matra navara, keval academics ma matra navara, keval research and development ma matra navara, vaar ko involvement of policymaking ma pani besi hunu pasa, jasto aamile laxa.
Thank you.
Yes, karan le gada, sikim raja sarkha le pani,
Thank you.
Akno cheli arula shasakta banaunuka nimti, ama yoja na jasma 20,000 rupee yearly diin sah. Bhatsalya yoja na jasma infertility ko problem bhai ko kapal sarlaai 3 lakh rupees diin sah. Ra, sikima bahini scheme, jasma hamro bhai bahina ru, jo pani school jantsan bahini ru, specially vaar ko nimti, free ma sanitary napkins aru di ne pravadaan gariye kusa.
Thank you.
Ra, yesto anekho sah, jasma aamile sikim sarkha le pani garne koshis gare kusa. Ra, malai biswaas sah, yesko implementation ma jaha saman delimitation ko kura aayo. Yo delimitation chaare, bana chaare hunsa, ola bane aamile aasa rahe kaso. Ki na ki sikim ma yora ekdame, there is one very typical example in sikim that two communities were provided ST category in 2002. But they are yet to get their reservation just because that delimitation is being freeze till 2026. So,
Thank you.
Tatkali, jo,
Please.
Us samay me government tha state me, usne ek mistake kia ki us time me seat reservation na hi kia aur delimitation ke ase hi karne de diya. Uske baad aaj tak na hi ho paya hai, to I think ye mistake is women's reservation me na hi hona chahiye. Aur hume biswaas hai ki comment of India ye karega. So once again, on behalf of my party and my leader Sri Prem Singh Taman and the entire people of sikim, I support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sri Vijay Kumar Hansag.
Sir, Mike, thank you. Thank you, Jemn sir. Narisakti ko navan karte hue, is bill ka, main swagat karta hu apne party Jemn ke taraf se. Aur dono pakse bola gaya ki yeh bill pehle bhi aaya, kin karano se itna vilamb huwa, un sab charchao me main na hi jaoonga. Main ye kar sakta hu ki main jis samudai se aata hu, vaha nari ka samman aur samman darja dena ka jo tarika aur kanun hai humare samudai ke andar me, use bhi mujhe laga hai, yaha ke logoon ko janna chahiye, usse kai faidhe honge. Humare yaha ye red bhi hai ki shadi ke baad jese bahut sare samudai me aapka title badal jata hai, humare santhal samudai me na hi badalta hai. Aaj bahut varsoo ke baad jo yeh bill ek mukam pe aane ke liye hai, kisliye itna deri huwa, in sabhi chijon pe kai bar baate hu chuki hai. Aadhe population, is desh ke aadhe population ko aaj samman dena ki baat ho rahi hai. Ya unhe aaswasan dena ki baat ho rahi hai. Lekin maine sadhan me pehle bhi ek baat ye kahi thi, ki isi sadhan ke madhim se mahila ka apmaan bhi huwa hai. mahila ka apman bhi huwa hai. Pratham nagri, hamari raspati Srivati Dhupadrapati Murmuji. Aaj purane sadhan se aaj nay sadhan me hum log aaye lekin kisi ek karikram me unhe upastit maine dekha nahi. Mujhe ye samaj me nahi a ra hai ki is pure prokyaya ke vidhi vidhan me aapne sadhan ke bahar se kai logon ko bulaya. Kai logon ko bulaya, lekin jis chair ke dwara ye house bulaya jata hai or ek mahila aaj waha us chair me bheti huie, kadivasi mahila chair me bheti huie hai or purane sadhan se lekar ke hum log nay sadhan me ghush gaye lekin kisi ek karikram me bhi unko hum logon ne dekhi nahi paye. Ye sawal mera is sadhan ke madhyam se main ye bolna chahta hu
Yes, please.
ki jis tarah se us pratham chair ka apman huwa hai.
Please, 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 please. Aapne, aapne Honorable President's ke name ko nahi mention.
Sir.
Please.
Agar koi baat
No, no, no.
is sadhan ke madhyam se hi apman huwa hai.
Name will be expensive.
To yaha nahi bolunga to kaha bolunga?
No, 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 don't use the name of the president, please, please. You can very well say the president.
Okay, I won't use the president's name. Lekin aapne jo galte ki hai use aap swikaar lijiye. Aapne jo galte ki hai use aap swikaar lijiye, aaj pataas pratisat population ko aap convince karna chahte hai ki aap usko usko unka hak dena chahte hai, lekin isi sadhan me, isi sadhan me aapne apman kiya hai. Aaj se pehle, jitni sarkare rehiya, koi bhi rahe. Kisi ne prasne kia ki kisi aadhi mahila ko, apne bal par is des ke rashtepati banne ka avsa mila, vo mila hai, to isi sarkar ke samay mila hai, lekin inki halki rasrithi ke chakkar me, us bill me jaha mahilao ko adikar dena ka kam horaa hai, ye log apni halki rasrithi ke chakkar me rashtepati ji ka name isme nahi kisiitna chahe. Ye rasrithi ka visay nahi hotata hai. Vo marne rashtepati deshi.
Please, please. I have to be heard. Yeah, yeah, please, yes.
Yaha jab baat horai hai ki pure des ke adhe population ko samman dena ki baat ki or usi sadhan me jab apman hoti hai to usme agar main baat rak ra hu to unhe samajni chahe ki unki galte kaha huie hai. Or is purya prokyaya vidhi vidhan me agar unko yaha pe upastit nahi hone diya gaya, kiswa jese ye bhi unko batani ki zarurat hai.
Yes.
Main idhini baato ke sah apne baato ko biran dunga, bahut bahut dhannebat.
Dhannebat, dhannebat. Shrimadi Sarada Ben Patel ji.
Dhannebat, Adiyak ji. Hamare savidan me Bharat ke nagriko ko samman avsa dena ke liye kaha gaya hai. Aaj mahilai bhi har khetra me apna kartav nivaari hai. Jiski sarvangi vikas ke liye loktantra me mahilao ka bhi yodan raha hai. Hamare yaarshri pradhankmantri ji ne nay sansat bhavan ke pehle hi din mahilao ke liye vidhanshaba or lokshaba me taitis pratisat aaraksan ke bill ko manjuri di hai. Ya ek etiachik faesla hai. Sabka saath, sabka vikas, sabka biswasa or sab ke praya se hi hum is des ko duria me number one tak le ja sakthe hai. Or isi dishaa me hum, ya ek kadam bhi hai. Is bill ke aate hi is sadhan me or ras sarkaro me mahilao ka pratidhithwa bad jayega. Iske saath saath mahilao ki zimmedariya bhi bad jayegi. Main her party ko ye karna chahti hu ki aap kabil or padhi leki mahilao ka chaayen karke unko raj evam kendra me bheje. Hum mahilao ko bhi sabhanna hoga ki aap apni kabiliyat ke hisaab se apne khetra ka vikas kijiye. Is des ke savidan ne aapko ab yo taaka di hai. Aaj ek mahila ke tood pe main mananaya pradhankmantri ji, Sri Narayana Modi ji ka shukriya adha karna chahti hu. Or sabhi partiyon se vinanti karte hu ki vo apne khetra ki kabil or yuva mahilao ko pratidhithwa or rasrithi karne ka avsa pradhan kare. Aaj mujhe isi vishesh mokke meri vichar ko sadhan ke samne rakhne ka avsa dena ke liye aapka dhannebat karte hu or sahosh is bill ka samartan karte hu. Dhannebat.
Dhannebat. Sri White Okohu.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman for giving me an opportunity to participate in the discussion of hundred twenty-eighth Constitutional Amendment on Woman Reservation. Sir, first of all, I'd like to wholeheartedly congratulate the Honorable Prime Minister and the present government for taking bold decision to introduce this bill in this August House on twenty-eighth of September two thousand twenty-three, sir. While congratulating the Honorable Prime Minister, let us also not forget our past leaders who have given their best in bringing this thirty-three woman reservation bill. Sir, much have been discussed about this woman reservation bill. So I'll not repeat what the honorable members have already shared on the floor of this house. But in the presence of Honorable Law Minister, I would like to say a few clarification before bill is put to work. Mr. Chairman, sir. Recently, the limitation has been completed in Jamen Kashmir and also in Assam. And this morning in the full hour, gazette notification has been placed on the floor of this house by the Honorable Law Minister. And very soon, there is going to be the limitation in Arunachal and Nagaland. Whether this woman reservation is going to be implemented in those states where the limitation has been completed and due to be completed or it has to wait for the other states to implement this reservation, sir. Sir, lastly, I want to bring to the information of the Honorable Home Minister that Nagaland since nineteen seventy-four, the limitation has not been there. And during two thousand twenty-two-one, there was a proposal to have the limitation along with Jamen Kashmir, Assam, Arunachal. But because of the litigation, the limitation, the limitation could not take place. Last fifty years, when there is no the limitation, out of sixty constituencies, some constituency have even one lakh voters, but still some constituency have less than ten thousand voters. There is lot of disparities in the state of Nagaland in respect of the limitation. Therefore, I would like to ask the Honorable Law Minister, as and when this bill is passed and the Honorable President give assent, when this bill is likely to be implemented, I think the time bone should be given. And also, I once again I'm asking whether this reservation will be implemented in those states where the limitation has been completed recently. On behalf of my party N D P P Nagaland and on behalf of my Honorable Chief Minister Shiri Nipiriyor, I fully support this thirty-three woman reservation bill. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sri Laura Force.
Thank you, sir, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I would like to congratulate the government for bringing about this particular contentious bill. As I say, that in the past so many times this has been attempted and yet it failed. But this time we think that it will surely come to pass, particularly as we have come to the new parliament building that is with new vision, with new hope, with new attitude. I'm sure every member will continue to support whatever comes up in the floor of the house for discussion. On the first day of the session here in the new parliament, I thought that the semblance of order was much, much higher. And so let us leave whatever was in the old house and let us begin anew here. On, on behalf of the people of northeast India, we have always given a very special place for women in matters concerning governance of villages, societies, and particularly in Manipur. Manipur has had its role producing women of great character and caliber, freedom fighter in the person of, from amongst the tribal community, Rani Gaydilu. She had led in the battle against the foreign rule, colonial rule, and she had fought for self-rule amongst her own people. And so, even in today's world, we have the, in the nineteen zero four, Nupi Lal was also fought by the women of the Meethes against the British colonial rulers. They fought against them and then the response in order the colonial authorities to send away Manipuri men to Kabu Valley had also taken, fetched a number of to fetch timber for rebuilding of the then police agent bungalows. And so the women folk, they truly fought. Marappaibis, who are the torchbearers or the women association, women societies in various communities amongst the tribals have played a great role in preventing atrocities and attacks on human rights by armed forces. Social cleansing by staging prohibition campaign against alcohol and drugs at local village levels. Good governance in villages have also been propagated by women folks in those days. Sir, I belong to the Naga People's Front. In the year two thousand seventeen, elections of the local bodies were held against reservation of thirty-three percent for the women folks in the state of Nagaland that my party had been ruling at that particular point of time. But due to sudden discrepancies, due to sudden infringement on the ground rules, particularly pertaining to special provisions granted to Nagaland under Article three seventy-one, there was confusion and then there was a lot of opposition from members from the societies.
Yes.
Therefore, sir, particularly at this particular point of time, unless the communities, unless various stakeholders are taken into confidence and then the way it would be implemented, it is informed that we may once again cause this type of problems. For equality and participation of women in all developmental and decision-making processes of the nation, women are equally gifted as men to deliver.
Thank you.
Empowerment is the need of the hour at this age. My party, the Naga People's Front, support this bill.
Thank you very much, Sri Badrudin Nasmalji.
Aa gaya, aaya. Is aam bill ke upar bolne ka moka diya. Women empowerment ka maamla, main samajta hu koi bhi inkar nahi kar sakta aaj ke zamane me, lekin jhagda main subha se dekha ra hu, credit ke liye, koi cash ki baate nahi kar ra hai. Asal bal to lae the Raju Gandhi ji, ye to sabko manna padega. Or uske baat lokshaba lokshaba, apni baat apne time pe bolie, hamare time pe bhat bolie, disturb kyu karte hai. Uske baat lokshaba me bhi Congress party ne usko pass kia, rajya shaba me jab gaya to isi bije bhi party ne uska inkar kia, uska saath nahi diya. Aaj cricket lena ki baate horai hai. Hakikat ye hai ke orton ko ye bill pass hona chahe, hamari parties ka pura pura support karte hai. Or main Rahul Gandhi ji ko mubarak baat dena chahta hu ke unki pati yatra na inki nindhe haram kar diye. Nindhe haram kar diye.
Please, please, please.
Kyal laa ra hai, kyal de ra hai, or kyal baat kiya ra hai, inko kuch nahi.
No, no, he is not dealing, minister.
Parishaan hai, bill ke upar bill laenge, ye session me jo bulaya gaya na, usi ka ek hissa hai.
Thank you.
Kisi ko pata hi nahi hai, kyu bulaya gaya? Isliye, sir ji, aap bheti, aap acha aadmi hai, main danta hu bheti.
Aap idhar address kare.
To ye, ye isliye, isliye mera ye karna hai Rahul ji, main yahi kauunga ka aap apni pati yatra ko jaari rakhke, inshaAllah, bahut jaldi ye, har hafte me ek session bulayenge, har hafte me ek session bulayenge on naya naa bill, ab dekhiye, please, mandir masjid ka jhagda to last time pe election me khamhob gaya. Ab to fir bhabari masjid dusra banne vala nahi hai, unhone bana liya mandir, koi baat nahi. Is marta waak kya mudda lae, uske liye parishaan hai. Vo orton ki talak ka maamla laave, kashmir ka masala laave, reservation ka masala laave, orton ki marsaw. Ye reservation jo hai, ye milna tha orton kaha ke, lekin isi ke saath main yahi kauunga ki sir, thodi der ke liye un bachioon ka bhi sochhiye, jo parliament tak aane ke bare me unka education nahi hai. Ya vo aate hai to unko peechesha support nahi milta. Kyu ye partiya, badi badi partiya, orton ko ticket dena me itna kanjusii karte hai. Ek marta waak dil khol ke, sir parliament me bolne se nahi hoga, sir, maidan me bhi kam karna padega. Aaj mere asam ka haali hai, sir, main asam se aata hu, flood or erosion ke veje se hamare log taba or barbaad hoge. Badi badi aapadiya khamhob hogi. Sir, isliye hum iski taayit karte hai, or is house se, main jo aapke madhyam se ki hamare flood or erosion ko jarur dekhiye, asam barbaad horaa hai, taba horaa hai, please usko bacha le.
Dhannebat, Sri Sushil Kumar Rinco ji.
Prasdas.
Thank you. Speaker sah, thoda bahut bahut anvad karda ki tusi nari shakti bandhan bill deyote, mainu apni gal rakhna moka deta. Speaker sah, meri party, aam aadmi party, is bill da jeda samartan kar diya kyon ki nari or saadi mahilawa ne saade smaaj or des nirmand vich bahut vada hissa paya.
Shri guru, shri guru Gobind Singh ji Maharaj. Unade Adarni Mataji.
He has not given for translation. Mata.
Sorry, see, you have not given letter for translation, I think. So you please speak in Hindi, you can very well speak in Hindi. Otherwise, you should have given letter in writing in advance so that it will be translated in.
Do minute jada de.
No, please, no, no, you please.
Do minute jada de.
Either you speak in Hindi or.
Mother tongue se dusi tongue me change karna thoda.
No, 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 the question is, if you want to speak in your mother tongue, no, there is no problem. But you have to give letter in writing in advance. Otherwise, members may not know what you are speaking, even myself.
Right, sir.
So, if you are speaking in Hindi, you can speak.
Sure, 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 sir.
Okay.
Sab, main jis rajya se aata hu, us rajya se hamare bahut hi Mahan Mataji Mata Gujarcoji, jo ki sahib Shri Guru Gobind Singh ji ke mataji the, unhone apne jeevan kal ke duran apne pati dev Nome guru, shri guru Tekh Bahadur ji ki shaheedhi dekhi, unhone apne jeevan kal ke duran, apne charo potar hai jo vo smaaj ke upar, koam ke upar shaheed karwai, or apne potar Dusme guru Adarni Shri Guru Gobind Singh ji Maharaj, unki shahadat bhi unhone apni aakhon se dekhi. Or shaheed Bhagat Singh ji, jab suli pe chade, to unki mataji ne hastey hastey apne potar ki jo des ke liye jo bali di. So main samajta hu ki is des me hamari mahilao ko, unka bantaa maansanmaan jarur milna chahe. Par is bill me mujhe kuch aesi trutiyon nazar a ri hai jo is bill ko turun lagu karne me acchan ban rahi hai, dikkat ban rahi hai. Or main je venti karna chahta hu ki samne saathi bheti hai. Kal pradhankmantri sah ne bahut achhi speech central hall me ki. Or sir, main je venti karna chahta hu ki jab is nay house ka ni patah rakhha gaya, jab is nay house ko banne ke baad iski inauguration ki gayi, jab kal hum sab is nay house me enter kiye to sir, humne custodian of the house, hamare Adarni Rashtepati, unki jo gair madhurgi hai, usko humne sabne notice kia. Jo hamare house ke custodian hai, unka, unko izad deni hamara farj banta tha, so main venti karna chahta hu. So, I want to defend.
See, the custodian of the house is not...
I want to defend. Before the arrival of Kalviya Lekha, the old one, the arrival of Kalviya Kooda, the son of Anay, Savitri Bhai, Full, and others, Mahatma Jyoti Bhai, Full, and others, in that time, I have been thinking of them, thanking them, giving them a farewell, leaving them behind. Children, we have been together for a long time. We have been fighting for a long time, fighting for a long time. We have been fighting for Kalviya, for the head, for the head. They do not have any respect, no respect. These children are being kept alive by the people. They are being kept alive in their homes. They have changed their lives by working for them. From the beginning, before the end, they are saying they want to survive, saying they are a group of people. In this people, we are fighting for them. That is why, in this way, our Rajapati, the people of India, who are striving for a new nation, for a new country, they are struggling to find a way. Whether they are a child or a child, whether they are a child or a child, they have not heard of this. This is what Jalkan Muthi Borchavichar, the neighbor, said. Not only his complaint, but all the other countries' complaints, they are hearing. The people of Parvati, the people of Janaak, the people of Alidhar, they are struggling to find a way. A girl, who is a head, who is keeping them safe, is a big fault. In that case, this, the children of the village, they are not happy, they are not happy. In this way, we are fighting for this. The people of Ayarath, Ayarath 81, Rajiv Gandhi, this is what they are doing. After 33 months, this is what is happening. 33 years of children, children, people are going to die. Eighty-five children are going to die, a very big group. We are 33 children, children, we are 33 children. If something is broken, we will repair it. 33 years of children, this is what is happening. But it is always going to happen. The people of Ayarath are doing it, there is no doubt. Now, it is going to happen, but will it happen? This is what they are asking. 2033, this is what is happening. What can you achieve? Now, people are connecting, going to do it. Now, we are doing a delimitation, saying we are going to do it.
Thank you.
All of this is done, now it is going to happen. They have not heard of this. They are not happy, they are not happy. What is the meaning of this? Why are you doing this? The people of Nadaalban, who are new to this.
Thank you.
The people of Madhini, the people of Madhini. The people of Arasila, this is what I am saying. The people of Alum, the people of Indapokh, people of Yamatra, a large group of people of Nada, this is what I am saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Whenever there is a dark side, the house has its house. The reality is different. I request, the devil, at least think of it as an human. Stop cursing, it is enough. Stop showing your power and your might, it is enough. I think this, whenever, when people say, whether it is from the government or from a party, I want to know from all people, whenever you say you give power, I give this power. Who are you? Because this country is mine, this world is mine, this world is mine. So, you are not giving. Mantha Bhanaj, who supported this bill before, is now. I will say, whoever gives such a girl, who gives power, it is not like that, it is not named power. His husband, his brother, his father does work, he makes roasted food at home. They do what they do. And I want to say this. Whenever you say, our government gives such a percentage, fifteen, thirty, thirty-one, you give such things, we give such things. You are happy, we are happy. When giving and taking is stopped, when equal is, then the dark side will get the real acceptance. And we are waiting for that day, when we are equal. Thank you.
Sri Rahul Gandhi.
Thank you, Speaker, sir. It's nice to be speaking for the first time in the new house in your presence. I stand in support of the Women's Reservation Bill. Yesterday, I was listening to the discussion and the issue of the singh goal came up. And there was a conversation, a to and fro about the singh goal. And also a little bit about the conversation about the transfer of power from the British to the people of India. Before handing over power to the people of India, the British asked the leadership of the freedom movement, who are we going to transfer power to? And of course, there was a little bit of arrogance in this statement because they viewed India as a poor country. And the revolutionary answer that our freedom fighters gave was we are going to transfer power to the people of India. So, we, so we became a country that from its inception gave the vote to all our women. And this was a revolutionary thing at the time. We also gave the vote to every single community. And the vote was a mechanism of transfer of power. It was designed to further transfer power to the people of India. And if you look at the journey from independence, it's been that journey. It's been a constant transfer of power, more and more and more power to the people of India, on one side. And on the other side, the counter idea that take away power from the people of India. This is the, this is the fight that is going on. And in fact, in many ways, it is the fight that is taking place today. Huge step forward in the transfer of power to the women of India was Panchaiti Raj, where they were given reservation and they were allowed to enter the political system at scale. And this is another step. It's a big step, it is not a small step. And I am sure everybody in this room, the treasury benches, the opposition, everybody agrees that this is a very important step for the women of our country. They have, they fought for independence. They are as capable as any man in many ways, more capable and should be given as much space as they possibly can be given. There is one thing in my view that makes this bill incomplete. I would like to have seen OBC reservation included in this bill. I think it is very important that a large chunk of India's population, large chunk of India's women should have access to this reservation. And that is missing in this bill. There are also two things that seem strange to me. One is the idea that you require a new census to implement this bill. And the second is that you require a new delimitation to implement this bill. In my view, it is quite simple. This bill can be implemented today by giving thirty-three percent of the seats in the Lok Sabha and the Vidhan Sabha to India's women. And so, I wonder if this is not designed to push the ball forward, to push the ball forward seven, eight, nine years and then let this thing play out the way it does. I know my friends tend to like to take the attention of people away from other issues. You know, there is of course the Adani issue, which is, they always want to take the attention away. But there is another, yeah, yeah, I would like to say that. One of the things that, this is quite a nice building. Nice, nice peacocks. Nice peacock feathers on the ground. Nice peacock feathers in the chair, it's a nice tasteful building. But frankly, I would have liked to see the president of India in this, in this process. The president of India is a woman. She represents the tribal community and it would have been befitting to have her visible in this transfer from one house to the other. So, one of the things that the government likes to distract from, of course, is Mr. Adani. And there is another thing that the government likes to distract everybody from. And that thing is called the caste census. For some reason, and I don't quite understand what this reason is, the moment the opposition raises the issue of caste census, the BJP tries to create a new distraction, a new, a new sudden, you know, event so that the OBC community and the people of India look the other way. In my research for this speech, I took a look at the different institutions that define how our country moves forward. There are many. There is the Lok Sabha, Rajya Sabha, Vidhan Sabhas. There is the bureaucracy, there is the press. And there is the judiciary, and I looked and I looked with an eye to understand what is the participation of the OBC community in these institutions.
I asked, what is the nature of our institutions? I was asking this and I researched in different institutions. Who, who is central? Hindustan, the Hindustan. The central. Don't worry, don't worry. Don't be scared, don't be scared, don't be afraid, don't be afraid. We are talking about caste census, don't be afraid. So, so I checked. Simple, simple thing I did. I said, look, what is the most important set of people in the government of India? The people who define how this country is governed, of course, Lok Sabha and Vidhan Sabha, but beyond that, they are the ninety secretaries of the government of India. Ninety people secretaries are responsible for managing the core of the government of India. And I asked myself the question, how many of the ninety people come from the OBC community? And, and I was, I was shocked and shattered by the answer. I, I asked this question, who are seventy secretaries, sorry, ninety secretaries? Who are the people of Hindustan who run the government, who run the budget? Who are OBC? Narendra Modi, the president, who is working for OBC? I asked this question. I want to answer you. Of the secretaries of Hindustan, there are only three OBCs. And listen, and listen. And listen, don't shake. Don't be afraid. And listen. Who are, who are the secretaries, who are OBC communities? Who are the people of Hindustan who control fifty percent of the budget? If the budget of Hindustan is forty-four lakh crore, then it controls five percent of the budget. And listen, and listen, I am doing it, I am going there. I mean, who is, who is...
You do not want to hear OBC's story? 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 You are in the enemy of OBC. You are in the enemy of OBC. You are in the enemy of OBC. Do not want to hear OBC's story? Do not want to hear OBC's story? Do not want to hear OBC's law? Do not want to hear OBC's law?
Yeah, yeah. See, they are not showing anything. Yeah, yeah, who is...
I am proud of the Communist Party.
One minute, one minute, one minute, one minute, please.
I am proud of the Communist Party, first, it is a girl's election bill. And second, everyone in the Communist Party is afraid. You should not say this in parliament.
Sir, this is a discussion. Sir, Speaker, sir, this discussion, this, Speaker, sir, this. Speaker, sir, this discussion is about the transfer of power to the people of India. The women being one group of the people of India and the OBC community being another group of the people of India. And I am elaborating that the OBC is who number a huge percentage have three percent of the ninety secretaries of this country and control and define five percent of India's budget. This is an insult and a shame to the OBC community. Who is the OBC community's curse? Then, the question arises, how many OBCs are in this country? How many are rich? How many are rich? And the answer to that question can only be found by caste census. So, I have a suggestion for my government. First, you should pass this girl's bill. Today, pass it. You should pass it. And this delimitation, you said. And this census, it is not necessary. Thirty-three percent of women, you should give it directly. And secondly, secondly, change this. Change this.
Camera is not here, sir. Camera is not here. You can show it, sir. I will show it in my language.
Yeah, yeah, you, you change this. This, this list is, this is OBC's curse. Ninety people are secretaries of Hindustan. They are...